For your full participation, you can be found on the Town's website at www.servage.gov/town-administrator/pages/pow-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, the members of the public can listen and or to watch the meeting either online via the Town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at (774) 304-5555. Enter 1428-TOWN to the meeting number and 12345 to the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during the public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive records of the meetings on the Town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Our this evening's agenda is to accept or approve the minutes of February 11th, February 25th, and March 10th. Jean, I assume we have no A and R's?
No, we do not.
At 6:35, we'll have the special... Okay, thank you. At 6:35, we'll have a special permit and site plan review public hearing for Caregiver Patient Connection doing business as Local Blue 365 Main Street. At 7:25, we'll have a special permit and site plan review public hearing for Heal Servage Incorporated 660 Main Street. At 8:15 PM, we'll have a public hearing to consider the voting for a zoning dialogue changes that has been discussed by the board previously. Following that, we'll have the Town plan update and alter some new visits and adjournments. You had an opportunity to review the minutes of February 11th? Are there any changes, corrections for the February 11th meeting? One here. February 25th, Town. I was gonna say 11th. You don't have the 11th?
No.
The 11th category because there wasn't a floor on last time. So I'll... We'll pass over those and go right to February 25th then, alright? How about the February 25th minutes? Does anyone have any changes, corrections, or anything? I'll accept in a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Sub move. Okay. Second, Sue. Jean, do you want to roll call up there?
Yes. Charlie?
Okay.
Sue?
For the Planning Board members, all votes have to be roll call votes, so Janay will call the roll.
Charlie?
Yes, you said Charlie, I completely agree with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Want me to do it? Yeah. Alright, I'll do it. Can you hear me better? We're going to call the roll right now. Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sue Waters?
Yes.
Dane LeBonte?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
I don't believe I was at that meeting.
Okay.
Objection?
Chris Bouchard?
Another Janay. Yes.
Abstentions? Michael Chisholm?
Dane should have just stated, you're up for the 25th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next we'll have the minutes of the March 10th meeting. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, or anything?
Nothing.
Okay, I'll accept the motion then to approve the minutes as submitted.
Sub move, Jeff.
Second? Sue? Second.
I was not pressed.
Do I call the roll, Jean?
Yes, who seconded the motion?
Chris.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the roll now. Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Dane.
Russ Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sue Waters?
Epstein.
Dane LeBonte?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Yes.
Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Thank you. For future votes, if you're making a motion, could you state your name and then the motion, and the same with the second, please?
Very good.
Thank you.
Great, okay. The next item on the agenda is special permit and site plan review public hearing for Caregiver Patient Connection, UDA local visits. Sue, do you want to read the public statements?
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A of law law, the planning board will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall in Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street on Tuesday, April 14, 2020, at 6:15 PM, on the application of Caregiver Patient Connection Limited, 910 Boston Post Road East, T310 Barrowell, Massachusetts. The applicant reports a special permit and site plan approval as required by Chapter 31, 24, and 25 of the retail establishment, and an additional 2,400 square feet health plus retail space, and limited side improvement of a property located at 365 Main Street. The planning board may be like, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order to expanding certain provisions of the open meeting law, to hold a public hearing virtually in which tapes detailed representing the respective Mustangs will be made public by the planning boards in advance of the hearing, and will be held this year at servage.gov/town-administrator/virtual-meeting. For those of you who want to participate virtually, written comments are least accepted in advance of the public hearing. A copy of the site plan and application can be inspected on the Servage Town website and on this planning board, or arrange to see me to view the applicant package file, contacting the Servage Planning Department at (588) 347-2500, or by email at jaylacy@servage.gov. Any person can consider wishing to be heard on his petition to the peer at that time and place of meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. Jean, do you have anything you'd like to... Go ahead and tell us your presentation, or if you want the caregiver to do the presentation.
Charlie, I think that caregivers should give their presentation. Also to let you know, John Chevlin, our peer reviewer, is on the call. And then I have my report, which I've sent to all of you. So I think after they make their presentation and we have board member... Excuse me, questions, then I could overview my report.
Hey, very good.
So we'll give control to... Sorry, we'll give control of the screen to Michael Stady now.
Actually, Jean, it's Catherine, triple O. I think I'll start out just quickly, a brief introduction.
Oh, of course.
Sue, do you want Mike to have the screen first, Catherine?
Um, so Michael will be the presenter, Vivian Green, I just wanted to introduce the project.
Thank you, thank you.
Catherine, go ahead and do your introduction.
Okay, sure thing, sure thing. So my name is Catherine Triple O, and I'm going to be brief because I have a fear of my dogs are going to start barking. Jean, you're just in our room looking for dinner. So I just wanted to introduce myself and Michael. My name is Catherine Triple O, I'm a partner with Caregiver Patient Connection. My husband is in our dorm, a half in town as well. And I started Caregiver Patient Connection in 2016, and then I joined with Michael, who's actually a friend of mine from Willoughby and Barry, and Nick Olds in 2018. My husband's named Michael, and Michael and I live in Barry. Right now, Caregiver Patient Connection, we're currently operational with our cultivation facility in Barry, and we have a retail establishment that's operational as well in Pittsburgh. We've been awarded licenses for both cultivation and manufacturing. Training camp for our construction is underway. We met with Jean, we started meeting with Jean in March of 2012, and we really wanted to thank Jean, the planning department, and the other areas of the board that we've met with for our hard start, thank you, and to learn more about us and our project. I'm sure that you know that we were awarded a whole community agreement by the board of selectmen in March. I think that one of our most important accomplishments right now in the Town of Servage, we really have gained the trust, I believe, in the support of our neighbors at the community, the Minneapolis Actuary Community at 365 Main, and we really appreciate the friendship and the support that they've given us in our project. So with that, I'll turn everything over to my partner, Michael Stady, who has the call-up and the presentation. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, can you maybe be the presenter today?
Yep. Okay, you're the presenter now, Mike, and you have to share your screen.
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
You should have it now. Great. Thanks, Catherine. Catherine said, my name is Michael Stady. He's part of the Caregiver, I've been developing this in Massachusetts for 25 years, and I have to say, I never dealt with Town professionals, accommodating, and hardworking at Servage, so we really appreciate that. We worked in multiple sites and drove Jean and Chief Ford crazy for about four months, trying to find a site that was going to work, an asset, from a safety standpoint, as well as minimizing traffic impacts at Town of Servage. We believe we found that site at 365 Main Street. This Google map shows traffic coming from Connecticut. The reason we show that is, the first two years until Connecticut had legal cannabis recreational, we were going to see a lot of traffic from the state of Connecticut. And so it's really important to us, to answer Town, as we met with people and talked to the department, and Chief Department, Chief Police, that we really minimize impact in neighborhoods. And if this site does that, 84, you get off, you turn around, if the U-turn is a light, into Art's Park, and then Ameezy on 84, everybody knows the site. We tied up three different sites, and on this one, I think it's really an ideal site. In addition to the site that needs to be developed, it's been based for five years, and they're a common site in Town, and I think our architecture is going to help really improve what we're avoiding in Town right now. The professionals that I've been working with to get to this point are Len Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering, who I think all of you know very well. Michael Radner is our landscape architect, and Rod Emery is World Backwater Design Engineer. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Len, on the site and the engineering.
Hello, good evening, this is Len Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering. I'd like to go over the site review relative to the presentation, but before I do, just kind of lighten the weather that's in place. Leave a note that you posted in the South Beach News on March 26th and April 2nd. Certified letters were mailed to the butters in the Redding Towns, which was on March 23rd. And the filing for the planning board was actually done March 3rd. So along with that, we had a public hearing with the design review board on March 2nd, if we looked through the building architectural features, sign features, landscaping, lighting on the property itself, the board itself at that time. On the second, voted in affirmative whether or not that was presented. And from that, we were now before the planning board for the special permit. The property itself, as you can look at, they got 365 on Main Street, and the southern side of Route 20, which is actually a barrier, which is in the front of the property itself. But the traffic, the way it's gone, it was presented to you, you find that people leaving the site would have to go right only, and could not go west on the property off of 20 because of the barrier that's there. We surveyed the property by leaps and bounds. The property itself was found to have absolutely no easiness on the property. The monumentation was set at all the corners, and an 81X survey plan was issued for that property to gauge that nothing else is there. The front portion of the property itself is actually in two phases. It's actually 300 feet from Route 20 in a southerly direction, which contains approximately 1.55 acres. And the southerly portion is suburban residential, which contains approximately 0.61 acres. On the residential property, presently there are nine mobile homes over there. That area itself, as there's no alterations that take place within the area of the residential homes. And the access coming off of Route 20, which services that area, is actually located on the westerly side of the property, is an existing curb cut that is there. That will not be altered under minor changes with the DPW and the state, and which we will have to go before them on any of the alterations. And the property itself is being presented to you on six sheets, which was under our final number of 19059, which is on a scale of 100. 1 inch goes 30 feet, and signed by myself, by Len Jalbert, which I'm a registered professional engineer and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Also, the plan that was done for the boundaries is under a new plan, which is 15226, that was signed by George Smith, which is a registered game surveyor, which is related with the 81X, that was done for the property itself. The plans under 905 actually shows you the lot numbers and the budding properties on it, and all the properties that are around it. And then also, the plan we have on that shows you anything that is impacted within 500 feet of the site. We found that nothing was within 500 feet of the site. In fact, the school, which is the closest thing to the site itself, it's actually 1,500 feet away, that the crow flies off of, basically feeder street. So there's really no impact at all. The topographic survey that was done on the property is done on one foot contours, and then the location distinction of the open space and recreational areas were actually shown on the plan. If you look at it, on the westerly portion, we have an area for snow removal, which is on the site. In the southerly portion, the area itself, we're putting in a fence along that property on the southerly side to screen the residential properties from the commercial property, so there'd be no interference whatsoever between east and west side. The area itself originally was... Had drainage on it, which actually was collected within catch basin, there were small shumps, directly discharged from the property to the eastern side of this property, which is owned now by the person selling this property. What we've actually done there is we've taken the drainage that's on the site right now, we're going to completely discount it, and then going in with a new drainage system on the property, which is going to have a storm scepter and a discharge basin located on the southern side of the property. The storm basin and catch basin will actually have a discharge overflow onto it after the basin. The discharge and the flow of the water right there is becoming at approximately 90 feet percent clear. Due to the stormwater management, we've allowed up to 80 percent. We exceeded that by approximately 12 percent. So we're going to be far greater than what was there now. Again, right now, when it was a gas station, it had absolutely no clear clearance on it. The drainage just ran directly into the budding property. So the improvement here that now is no comparison to what it was originally. The lighting itself on the property will be all going down onto the property itself. There'll be no lighting flow which going on to any of the other properties. The soil itself was done in February, February 19th, which we checked the soil there, the press location under paved soil, which is basically just a sandy looks, which is very big, had a water table of approximately 11 feet, which means that the infiltration system and the storm scepter system, they're not even come close to the actual groundwater itself. So it'll have no infiltration impact relative to the water table. The plan we also submitted was a linear distance map, which was done under 19059, which actually shows you all the property sites that are complete in the area, and their summary. The certified butters list actually was obtained from the Town on February 18th, and it is part of the submitted impact. The newspapers, we have that, we have the copies of that, which will be presented to the board as soon as we can get into the hall itself. And the 22 certified letters we will submit to the Town. Basically, what's happening here is we're ending up in a... One second. We're basically ending up with the parking requirements on the property itself, which is the extensive area, which actually we only need 13 parking spaces. And then the southerly portion of the building itself, which was in the gym, would require 10 spaces. So we actually need, by Town regulations, 23 parking spaces on the site. With that, you're actually furnishing 45 spaces. So basically, we're almost doubling what they wanted in the Town for regulations, which have no problem relative to parking. The traffic flow on the property basically will be going into a counterclockwise direction, which will be going in from the property and going around the building to the east three directions, and north, and west, and then back out onto 20 south. We've got plenty of stacking room for cars exiting, and plenty of stacking room for the cars entering, which would have made traffic no problems at all relative to it. The back of the building itself is going to have just parking there for the employees in the building, and then there'll be two exit doors out in the back. It will have ballots to mark the exit spots for the two exit doors back there, and then it will bring the entrance into the building itself, and be able to do it from that particular site. There should be no infringement upon the loading and discharging from the back. The dumpster, which is located on the most northeast, southeast of the core of the commercial site, which would be blockaded the same as the barrier in the back, which would be about a seven-foot-high barrier to block the trash removal itself. So basically, it's quickly, that's all I have. And if somebody wants to ask questions, I'll be happy to answer them, thank you.
All right, that's Catherine, our landscape architect. Michael, you still there?
Yes, I'm here. Who do you want?
Michael Radner.
Oh, Radner?
All right, I'll run with this end line. So the landscape plan has been designed to exceed the Town standards. We do this through the design committee. One of the key aspects we'll show you when we get to the animations of our properties, that we provided screening on the east three side of the property to screen the back of the building, which is, as you'll see when we get to architectural, our least attractive side of the building. We provide you 30-foot fifth in the front of the property along Route 20. It'll have a combination of lower growth perennials and bushes, as well as three of the... Bacon barren, completely paved site, and a tremendous amount of land. Over 35 hours of lighting, three nails and ground cover. So really, we're going to make it into a beautiful site. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Rod Emery, our traffic engineer. We will talk about the traffic study.
Thank you, Mike. We've listed a... I'll just do a quick summary, I'm going to hit five points sort of summarizing our traffic study. Study area, the traffic volume, safety level of service and parking, which is like the quickly sort of go over from the traffic study. Our study area on the west was the signalized intersection of Route 20 and Old Southern Village Road, and on the east side is the 131 interchange. So between those two signalized intersections, we capture most of the traffic that needed to be analyzed. In terms of traffic volumes, there's 25,000 cars a day that travel on Route 20 under the site. We put a little context there. We're heading about 25% of the site traffic, so that 25,000 cars a day. Because we counted traffic in January, we adjusted the volume by 3% for season and 7% for growth, so 25% versus 10% we've already added for other reasons, you know, due to sort of a context. The other element I'd like to just talk about for a second is peak hour volume, and how we get the trip generation for the site. Generally, ITE is to the transportation engineers, publishes a series of volumes on different types of progress and what they'll generate for traffic. Marijuana dispensaries are fairly new, there are studies being done, and if you used the favorite bible, ITE, they would have told me that I would have expected 57 trips to be generated in the afternoon peak for a marijuana dispensary this size. To be conservative, we used the number of stations that are going to be used and fully occupied for the peak hour and for the day. So we actually used 144 trips, 72 in 72 routes, which is more than double the amount of trips, which is very conservative on our analysis. From a safety point of view, we looked at crash rates, looked at the intersection in front of the site, and we found that looking at a crash rate, which is the number of crashes divided by volume of traffic on the road when we get a rate, that none of these intersections exhibited any safety problems. And secondly, we looked at site density issues, because pulling out of an unsignalized driveway is always a good idea to look at site density. Since cars are turning right and you're looking at the site density to the left, we analyzed stopping site density and intersection site density, so it's a triangle that allows a driver on Route 20 to see somebody calling. So it's a triangle that allows a driver on Route twenty to see somebody coming out and a driver in the driveway to look to the left, see somebody approaching. And at, uh, forty miles an hour, which is closer to the speed we, uh, measured out there as opposed to the, uh, thirty mile an hour speed limit, we need a site density of up to five feet to safely exit the driveway. We're providing over treated fifty feet of site density. So from a safety point of view, that works. The last, uh, the next thing we looked at was the capacity or the level of service at these intersections. Most of the signals are operating at a B level of service. The existing conditions, even with adding the ten percent seasonal adjustment and growth factors, it's still at B, um, and the site tries at the end of B. But, uh, the one exception to that would be the Route one thirty-one signal, the portion of it where the, uh, the nature, um, trap from Route thirty-one, um, is part of that intersection, not the paragons road portion. And that intersection operates at a B level of service. And generally, uh, it'd be a very, a very good operation and something you state except for, uh, design purposes. The one note we did make is that the one exception to the G level service is the left turn, one turn lane, the left turn that would not be impacted by the, uh, site traffic. But it's not getting in a frame time when it shows up at an F level of service. It's about a ten-second adjustment in the signal timing that we can correct that. The last issue that was touched on a little bit about parking, we look at parking by, again, looking at what I T E says marijuana dis- uh, dispensaries would generate. And we came up with a peak which usually occurs about the middle of the day or about thirty-three spaces, but, you know, demand for thirty-three parking spaces, um, and we're providing forty-five. So, uh, real quickly, I just wanted to summarize those two points of the traffic study. Turn it back to Mike.
Great, thanks, Rod. Um, I'm gonna take the boy through a little bit of the architectural and then we'll get the questions, which is definitely an important part of the board. This is our board plan. I don't touch on this because I wanna highlight a couple of features. The security's been reviewed and approved by the service police department, um, and that is in your file. But each of our entry splitter are one in, in Pittsburgh, which is often operating with, you can see it has a separate entrance festival and exit festival. And that entrance festival is controlled by magnetic doors that, um, because anybody can enter the store until their ID has been checked. And that is one of the big concerns about security for dispensaries is making sure that only underage, uh, is served. And this, this setup allows us to do that in a very safe manner, uh, and similar with the exit, um, you can't forget, you can't let anybody in without us knowing about it with magnetic locking doors. Um, the additional, the jinks space, um, which right now is designed for retail. We did have, we do have a lot of intent with a health clause out of Barry, but, um, we'll see what happens over the next six months and especially with what's happening in the world, the addition to stuff tremendously. And so, um, you know, if they do not move forward, we are designing for a retail use, which will obviously be very popular within the population. And the parking is already described, not more than that, the common area. An architectural standpoint for the design review committee, we tried to design something that is both traditional in, in look, um, and will fit the site. Our own is butter, it's friendly to our west. Um, their height of their group is about four high higher than ours, uh, but so like, like theirs, our, our gable end faces the street, um, from the street. Hang on. All right, we got that? This is the elevation from the street, which again will be screened from the landscaping of the deciduous trees and, and the bushes we have. Not, um, you'll see it, so it's not that fine, which helps with the landscaping providing. So as you pull into the property, um, this is what we're calling the front elevation. Uh, the signage is more of a traditional retail signage. Uh, we use a combination of materials, um, some stone countertop along the base, um, is cedar, it's a cedar grain, but it's a manufactured wood, um, siding material, uh, third deed, uh, architectural shingles, uh, and then we're gonna be using a, what's called a midnight green on the shutter, which is a very dark shutter. Again, contrasting, they give an, a nice feel to the building, uh, but keeping ale very much in, in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, um, and hopefully making this quite a lot more traffic than it is now, and we'll do see that. Um, this elevation is the elevation that will be seen when you're traveling westbound on Route twenty. And it'd be a prominent elevation, um, from our standpoint, it's, for security reasons and, and operational reasons, this elevation is basically all tied into two securitys. What we've done to mitigate that is we've screened this part, side of the property with albatrosses, um, planted at height of seven feet on a two-foot burn, um, build grow collars. So they're very quickly will screen that side of the building. But then also to give some depth and height, we've put in, uh, three deciduous trees. If we planted a, a three-inch chaloper, fourteen, sixteen feet tall, it will quickly grow to provide more space. We'll also see on the roof that we're proposing, and the design review committee were, were happy that they accepted our solar design. Um, we, our, our chain of the cultivation facility in Barry is fully powered by a, a two-megawatt solar farm that, um, Dean, Zappy and I own, and developed about eight years ago, and we very much believe in renewable energy and, and extra energy efficient construction. So that'll be designed into our building as well. The sign, uh, that will be at the street, place the entrance, is eight, eight, nine inches tall, sixty-six inches wide, which then the design review committee has gone over this and, and approved it, um, very much in keeping with other designs in the area, um, at sixteen feet tall, which is allowed by the code, doesn't overwhelm it, uh, but again, we think will be attractive and really lend a, a nice copy here to our facilities. Just quickly touch on that chapter thirty-one item, which are part of your cannabis bylaw. Um, odor, odor noise and light. Odor is not an issue for us. All of our product is pre-passed. Our Pittsburgh store, which is then stock, was operational, um, is on hold right now because of state mandate. Uh, then it's, it's back in operational for, operationally for a month, it's off for a couple of months, and there's no odor issues whatsoever coming out of that store. If there were ever odor issues, we'd deal with that with a charcoal filter system, but we are not, typically not at all. It's not an issue we don't manufacture. Um, we have a retail operation open from eleven to seven, uh, eleven to eight, uh, so, you know, during very normal retail times and, and it's not always coming from our operation. Light is provided by land, is all down lighting, um, and in compliance with the P C C as limited control permission regulation. We don't anticipate an issue of that. We've got a lighting plan done by Michael Radrick. Security, again, approved by the service police department already. Um, for obvious reasons, we don't provide those, tend to go into those details, but, uh, I think we should speak to that further if necessary. And then if I ever try to touch on our timing, um, in Massachusetts right now, the P C C is taking anywhere from six to twelve months to approve a license. Um, we build this building in three or four months. I've been developing this in Massachusetts since nineteen ninety-five. Um, my company does a lot of the work ourselves. Um, so construction not take anywhere near as long as a licensed fee will. So the license fee will be the commission factor. Our goal is six months. We've already submitted our application. This will be our fifth license, so we, we know very much what to do and how to do it. Um, but again, the P C C is not something that we can control. So anticipating at least six months before we'll be ready to open could be as long as not. Um, in, in conclusion, you know, I, I wanted to start with, again, the site we think is very appropriate, uh, a safe site for us, but, um, a site will minimize the traffic back to your neighborhood, a good site that in the long run will maximize revenue for both our company and the town. The reason you keep one of the top roads in the, in the state, and we think that our locations can provide that kind of tax revenue as well. Uh, finally, I think it's really important, as you, I mean, with companies in the industry that, and the people that are responsive, um, as Kathy described, we are all from this area, literally, Captain D. from Barry. Uh, I live in the metropolitan area now, but I often, if there's definitely issues to call us or Jeff, they call us, you know, to be there within thirty minutes. Um, and that's not always the case when you're dealing with the larger companies around the state now that are bringing cannabis to you. With that, I want to again thank the board, Gene and Jeff for bringing them together. Um, and any questions?
Great. I think we probably have questions from the, uh, from the board. I'd like to ask John Tremblin, if you have anything to add or any comments from your review?
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Blanchard, give you, you and the board just a brief overview of what we've done. So we received the development plans, the traffic impact study, uh, their application for the permit to access the state highway, uh, the special permanent site plan view application and the stormwater management schedule. Uh, we, we do those documents, provided comments back on March thirtieth, which I believe the board has. Um, over the course of the last two weeks, we've gone ahead and we've, uh, worked with the town, we worked with Michael, and we worked with Leonard, uh, as far as just coming some, to some resolutions, um, uh, some of the comments that we had. I'll say in general, the comments that we had were not, uh, deal breakers. You know, uh, stormwater management and things we were trying to do there and seems to work. It's just some details that need to be done. Traffic study I thought was very thorough, um, you know, covered everything as far as the capacity and safety and, uh, typical, uh, traffic engineering standards were used. Um, the final results for the, for minimal effects, uh, as far as traffic safety and , and, and capacity. Um, I did give a document with the latest comments, uh, based on the latest plans I received, I think it was yesterday morning, uh, so I'm not sure if you had a comment to that spreadsheet, but there's still just a few items that need to be addressed. You know, some of them, or several of them have to do with the NASTU T permit, uh, which, uh, I think is gonna go ahead and, and deal directly with NASTU T now, but some of those comments that we had were just, um, we got some wheelchair ramps and, um, NASTU T very strict in regards to making sure that A D A is met, uh, so we just asked for more details to be provided there. Um, another entrance into the site, NASTU T likes to have a thirty-foot radius in there. I think right now it's being provided eighteen feet deep. Um, and, um, let's see, um, comments, I'm trying to see. So, I mean, it's general stuff that they, they need to do just with NASTU T, and like I said, it's nothing big, but some details that need to finalize. Uh, some of the other outside standard comments that I had, um, that was discussed were, um, regards to the curving, the sidewalk around the building, uh, we could ask against you, you know, I, I know through discussions with Michael, it's gonna be a concrete curving, I think it's gonna be a monolithic bore, uh, sidewalk, uh, so just wanted to call that in the plan, just so everybody knew what's gonna occur on that. Uh, the right turn at the entrance, they do show an arrow, they just ask that the, uh, put in permitting requirements as far as the dimensions. I know right now we just have a, like, showing a length type, and guess what's just called a right turn, arrow only. Uh, the memo, the last item that I had, um, was in regards to the traffic study. They recommend some off-site, uh, signal improvements as far as timings, um, you know, signals are identified in the report, but there's been no plans provided to us in regards to what those changes are gonna be, and there's no plans that have to be submitted to the NASTU T as far as any, any off-site improvements to the traffic signal system. Um, I believe NASTU T also commented on that as well, is that, um, there's no plans as far as the off-site provided, so. Um, but like I said, in general, you know, it seems like all the comments that I had are working with the town in the applicant, um, you know, again, no deal breakers. I think they worked in regards to trying to address, uh, most of them, and there's a few that they have kind of identified that will deal with the state. Um, so a quick summary, uh, available for any, any questions myself.
Okay, John, thank you. I just have one good question, John, before I move on to the rest of the board. In that, with the discussion on the DMF gloves of the intersections, did you explain on that a little bit, the stairs?
Yeah, I mean, level service E is obviously approaching, uh, you know, failure. And level service E is, you know, peak hour volumes that occur there. Uh, I think with the additional traffic from this site, it's, it does drop it down because I think it's out of level source E that's very close to the threshold for F. I think the overall delay is not to be all that significant, but it was gonna decrease a letter wise, but timeline might be that, that significant.
At one thirty-one?
Yes, correct. That's the left turn, right, that was discussed by Mr. Emery. Um, and I think with some of the signal timing changes, I think they can go ahead and approve that moment as well.
Okay. Okay, uh, we'll have questions now from the, uh, from the board. Jeff Adams, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Um, the, the first is the applicat- or the, the, uh, the appointment system. What, is it, is it twelve at a time? Is that right?
Mike, the, so we have, the appointment system, we've designed twelve point of system within the box, within the building. Um, we've, we're limited to six hundred a day. We actually volunteered the study at four hundred and grow it over a period of three months to make sure it's smoothly, but at our peak is six hundred a day. Um, we can handle sixty-six or so customers an hour at the average of ten minutes a customer. That basically means eleven kiosk operational, uh, so that's how we back, we can have a kiosk needed, and that also helps drive the parties. The baby, any one time you have, essentially have to do twelve customers on site at a time.
So with, with respect to, uh, if, if the board is watching, um, in the next few months or whenever, uh, after these first, I think, two months, sixty days, decides to lift that restriction, and, um, my, my sole concern in respect to the traffic would be, um, that, that, that Route twenty Old Service Village Road left turn, um, specifically right after Lake Spirit, um, I mean, is there, is there any indication whatsoever that, that that left turn could back up on the Route twenty and cause mischief? Anybody can answer. I'm just curious. The third, Kathy to Ryan, our traffic engineer?
Um, I mean, well, the overall level of service at that intersection would be overall, all the movements are very low delayed, so no, I don't have any concerns about any traffic. Very low, very low, uh, queue length and level of service, so everything worked pretty well there.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please?
I've got it. Who's, who's that?
It's, it's Jeff. Uh, I'd like Mike to turn his screen off so we can, can you, Mike, turn your screen off, please? Mike, static. Please turn your screen off. There you go.
Yep, I'm working on it. Okay.
There you go. In that way, we can see who's talking.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Jeff, is that it? Do you have questions?
Yeah, as long, as long as, yeah, as long as there's no concern there, I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
No more questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Duchat, how about you? Do you have questions?
Nope, I do not. Jeff, uh, Jeff had asked my question, so I'm, I'm good.
Russell Changoy?
Oh, boy. I got trouble. Uh, first off, I'd like to compliment, um, you guys, the company. I mean, the praise you did to the town and the design of the building, I think it's gonna be a fast improvement to that area. Um, Ronnie, are you still on?
Yes, I am. So, uh, can you clarify, when you said there's no easements, does that mean that they have, uh, full control over the whole property and including where the trailer's at? They bought the property in its entirety, both, uh, the residential and commercial area with the, uh, nine mobile home sites, and the nine mobile home sites will stay within that area as an integral part of their ownership. So there's no need for any easements because it's under one owner.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, as you entered the park with the mobile home, uh, I noticed the, uh, trailer that, uh, was supposed to be moved, it's already gone, but right in front of it is some two poles, and I don't see them noted on either the plan, is being removed or still being there. And it looks like the road is somewhat shifting. Is that, and I'm, I'm concerned about moving those poles and if that's the power for the trailers, how long are we gonna be without power?
No, no, the poles are gonna stay in their present location. They're not gonna move.
You know which ones I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know which ones I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna dig down over the hill. I, I know where it is, yes. They're not moving. Okay. And, um, uh, I think John touched on it, and the exit going out, um, where the, where the alley is going to the right, and, heard you from Ron, John, did you say you wanted it spelled out only?
Yeah. Yeah, just, uh, well, just to have a-
Yeah, just, uh, uh, well, just to have a, an arrow that's, meets the standard as far as the size, so it's visible to the, uh, to the users. So there are standards as far as the size of a right turn arrow, or through movement arrow, that we've seen on pavement markings. So just a detail, make sure that it's a really six feet long, and the, uh, the, the paint is twelve inches wide. Uh, so something like that's very good for users.
I'd like to see it spelled out too, along with the alley, the alley, like you see when you're coming out of the east, so. So, I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that. And along those same lines, in the median strip of Route twenty, a sign, and there's one right, right next to it, is a left, coming out of Furling, where it says, right turn only. In the median strip itself. I know you got one on the stop sign, but everybody knows, nobody stops at the stop sign line, so I'd like to see one in the median strip also.
We're a metal guy. Okay.
Uh, that'll be, that'll be something just to be, I think, shape people, if you try to get a sign right there, it's hopefully clear.
I mean, if you, if you look right at Furling's sideways coming out, there's one right opposite of that, right in the median, oh, right. And there's sev- there's several actually through that whole median, same way.
Right.
Yep. So I think you should just continue with that, the safety thing. On the traffic study, is there any thought, the right turn that comes out, there's actually three lanes there, there's a right lane to go down one thirty-one. And what's gonna play off, when the traffic stacks up to two lanes, past that entrance? So what's gonna stop people from blocking that lane, so the right turn green going east, and especially where you said you're expecting a lot of the traffic, and a lot of your people's coming up from Connecticut? So, my, my question is, is how are you gonna prevent the cars from blocking that right lane going to one thirty-one? If the traffic is, is stopped going in, in both lanes? In other words, somebody's pulling out of the business to block that lane going to one thirty-one, if they want to go to eighty-four?
Rodney, do you wanna address the, the volume at that stop sign, or that traffic light, and then I can talk to them?
I was trying to understand the question, are you worried about somebody from your site pulling out and blocking the, the traffic coming, uh, eastbound on Route twenty?
So if both eastbound lanes on Route twenty going, going east are backed up to eighty-five, right, which quite often it does, um, and somebody's pulling out, they're gonna block that right, that third lane going one thirty-one to south.
Um. I can, can for a second, this is Mike Stady, so, I, I don't know, and I'm hoping Rodney has some data on how often that backs up, unless you have the two, no, we're gonna sound it. You know, the flow of our customers leaving, that the numbers, you know, sixty to seventy an hour, um, just isn't that high a flow. Um, that, they're gonna be, uh, you know, as, as Rodney said, it's a two percent or so increase of volume. Because our appointment-only system, like, a lot of managers will have their busiest hours between five and seven, and they might say, um, forty or fifty percent of their business during that time. Appointment system is gonna spread it out over the nine hours we're open, so we're really able to control the flow, ensure that, you know, that P.E.G. will have seventy customers at most per hour coming in and leaving the property. Um, you know, that's, I'll do the math that I had, is, you know, one every, um, minute or two. So, you know, it's not like there's a flow of cars leaving the property, like you have five cars a minute leaving the property, like you would have a Dunkin' Donuts set. Um, so you really think that mitigates the problem of a Connecticut driver blocking that southbound, yeah, that right turn to southbound on the one thirty-one line? Especially during those hours that's up?
Yeah, the other thing I would say, um, let me just pipe in a little bit, I think those signals are coordinated, and of course, we assume random sort of leaving the site, and what would happen is, as the right turn red down at Old Service Village Road, it would cut off the flow of traffic towards the site, that's where the traffic could come out from the site while the traffic was being held up. The traffic would clear at one thirty-one and wait for the gap, so, um, I would say the majority of the times, you're coming, making the right turn out of the, out of the site, there wouldn't be anybody stopped, but, uh, occasionally you hit that one spot where the light was, was red for the longest period of time at Third Ground Road or one thirty-one, and you'd have to back, wait for the queue to get moving before you jump into the queue, but that's probably happening once or twice every hour. It's not the standard case that, you know, the steady flow of traffic doing that.
Okay, just a concern of mine, Rodney, you could probably tell them.
Um, and the, and then just, the point about the level of service calculations is that there's some flexibility in green time. So, you know, all those signals, as the site has developed and traffic flows, could be monitored, and then, you know, slight adjustments in timing could be done as well. It would only be a, you know, slight timing adjustment.
Okay.
You know, the traffic's gonna be like six months from the traffic.
Yes, I know. Uh, Charlie Ador, a comment under the order of conditions, you want me to bring it up now, or later?
Why don't we look to the order of conditions, though?
Is that?
How, why don't we wait until we get to the order of conditions?
Okay, that's fine, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, thank you. Michael Chisholm, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, Russ brought up one, which was the one thirty-one, which, you know, some of it we talked through, I don't know that that'll be a huge issue. The one thing which I spent a lot of time reading through and thinking about is, um, one of the conditions under the zoning bylaw, which states, no special permits shall be granted to any barrow bond establishment within a radius of five hundred feet of a pre-existing public or private, school, child care facility, public playground, public parks, youth, or library, or similar facility in which children congregate. My concern there is, you know, the friendlies, which is pre-existing, which is a private facility, I would say on any given day, there are more children at that friendlies than there would be at the playground or the library. So, I really just question whether or not that meets the zoning requirement, um, given that that's a pre-existing facility where children do congregate. Um, so, that's my big concern, I, I've been reading through it, like, a lot over the past week, and I just don't see that that meets that requirement. Um, is that maybe my opinion of the matter, for sure, but just wanted to space out.
Okay, I'd like to maybe change if you could address that, if you say that, you know, the appointment bylaws.
Yes, so, if, if you remember when we were drafting this bylaw, and we had, uh, K.P. law working with us and drafting the bylaw, that it really pertained to those types of school places where children commonly congregate. Because you could take any restaurant in the community and say that children congregate there. If there were, um, say, Applebee's had children's birthday parties, you could say children commonly congregate there. But it means congregating on a regular, daily basis, with, you know, the same group of children going to school, whether it's preschool, nursery school, or a daycare center. So really, a restaurant that serves children does, does not fall into that, and so this therefore does meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I think not only read what was obviously approved at town meeting, um, and how, how they interpreted, so, like, the teams, uh, piece out there, and that's one interpretation, I'm certainly of the language here. Um, I mean, it's just, again, obviously, I feel like one of the things that would mean that everyone else thinks the same way, but, um, I just wanted to state that. Otherwise, I mean, the site, I feel like, is very well put together, um, it kinda meets most of the requirement, it's not like it's set for a site like this. Um, that's really my only feedback there.
Great, thank you very much. Dana Barton? Any questions, Dana?
I do, yeah. Um, on the existing plan, I saw the line that was noted as occupied, burned, relocated. And then lower, I see another, uh, mobile home that's noted as relocated. Is it nine units overall, and that's the former location of the already relocated one?
Uh, let me jump in on this, this is Mike Sadye. So, there are currently eight trailers on site and one vacant pad. We are gonna be relocating one of the existing trailers at vacant pad, um, and we'll remain with eight trailers on site. Hopefully that is understood.
It does, thank you. Um, I was also thinking about the easement, I saw that you have a letter of support from the residents, which I was really excited about. Um, to that end, I saw that you have a six-foot fence proposed along the balance of the property there. Um, is there any ability to get fence proposed along the balance of the property, provide additional connections to the residents?
For the person who just called in, please mute your TV. For the person who called in, please mute your TV.
Well, you would have eight or nine feet, and just like that.
For the person who just called in, please mute your phone or your TV.
But, uh, the east side, which is pretty, at the top, there's a wall, which technically acts as a three-foot burn. I think we can do something, do a burn on the left-hand side, and then I have additional protection.
I, I, I'm also looking at, like, can we, can we, can I help?
Excuse me, can we? Sorry, can we stop the meeting for a second? We have somebody who called in, and we're getting a lot of feedback, so we're trying to, um, get that under control here. If we could just pause for a minute, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dana.
Okay, thank you, Dana.
Is there a caller on the phone? If you wanna call into the meeting, please do, but mute your TV, because your phone and your TV at the same time will cause feedback. So for the caller who just left the meeting, please call in again if you have something to say, but please mute either your phone or your TV, so we're not getting feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, you can resume.
All right, thank you. So, I guess the thrust of my question is, tell me about how the twenty-foot light is gonna be less of a problem for that most adjacent tenant. Um, as part of your application, Michael Radner, jump back on?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Grab, grab your question regarding the shape of these mudrids tree and the light lane skid? Just, uh, good evening, everybody, Michael Fadman, Brad, and tonight. Um, it's, it's comparable to a cobra. So it's a large, K three, it's had a, a large leaf on it, a very dense, um, foliage pattern. So, uh, the fact that you look along that edge, uh, the large tree and the conifers there help to screen the light. Um, I understand that, uh, uh, question about pillars, but with these, uh, LED lights, have a very sharp cutoff, I don't expect anything to spill over beyond that extent.
Okay. Um, I'll scroll, sorry, I made a couple of notes here. Related to the other comments about the right turn only arrow, uh, and also I want to see stop bars painted that run across the, uh, path of travel. Um, you know, the right turn only arrow, the word only, and then also the stop bars. But, the first place that I saw the benefit of a stop bar would be the one-way path of travel on the north side of the building, coming out of that, a stop bar right there, and adjacent to that do not enter sign, I think would be well. Um, there's a fence, the easement, the stop bar. The adjacent property to the east has a large portion of pavement that looks like it used to be part of a gas station. Is there any plan for removing that as part of this project?
Um, there's not, that's owned by, um, three sisters that live in Florida, we've reached out to them, they don't have any interest in, um, selling, or, we tried to make a deal to use the drainage, because it, because it's already existing. Um, so unfortunately, we haven't been able to do anything with them.
Okay. Um, and obviously, there's a lot of underground stormwater infiltration, is there any environmental concerns, given the previous use?
Uh, note, we've, that the site has a clean toilet health, been released by the D.E.P., um, several years ago. Okay, you don't have to, you can, you can.
Good. And the outlet control structure could be underground outlets into that lower basin behind the retaining wall. What is the further outlet of that basin to protect the mobile home park in the rear? I'm gonna let Rodney take that.
Okay, what it actually is, is that basin, is there's a freeboard on the basin of one foot above it, and, uh, the thing is, there's an overflow on, on it to, uh, to go in, in the east and pass on, on the side of the, of the property and discharge, on sheet flow, off the, off the, uh, back of the property, eastward, eastward portion. Uh, the, the thing is, when it happens, I, I doubt if you'll ever see it ever get full, because of the fact that the, uh, leaching capacity that we're putting within the, uh, system itself, being a tall coffee material, uh, the, the leaching field itself is gonna hold everything, and that the, uh, leach field that's right there, it's, it's, it's gonna have very little, if any, overflow. It's just gonna be maybe, uh, storm frequency of, uh, maybe, uh, twenty years or so, it might happen, but under normal conditions, you would never, you'd never see any water in that.
Okay, but otherwise, there would be some sort of grading desire towards the east and not towards the south, as an outlet?
That's correct, there's one going to the east, if you, if you, uh, if you look at the, uh, I think it's sheet six, sheet six would show the, uh, the, I think it's, no, sheet five, sheet five would show the, 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 uh, the flow will not, uh, going in the eastern direction to the, to the eastern sides of the property.
Well, I mean, I, I agree, you'll probably won't see a lot of flow. Um, looking back at the landscape plan, along the rear of that same basin, there's five arborite that are proposed. Um, is there any consideration to expanding that along the line to provide more of a, a setup appeal for the residents instead of the, uh, D.V.P. fence?
Um, we hadn't gone too far with that when we met with the residents, they were more than happy with the vinyl fence. Uh, we threw that in, um, we weren't even asked to, but we decided to put that in just to break up the fence a little bit. With the proposal to move the fence up onto the retaining wall, um, those arborites really aren't gonna do anything. We'll see if the, the resident that lives closest to that retention basin, um, is gonna want something, and we'll provide it. Um, but that would be my question, because they'd be most directly impacted by it, but I also consider, if you're moving the fence to the top of the retaining wall, which admittedly, I'm the one that mentioned that, how that would impact the snow storage on site? I know snow storage was shown off to the west in, uh, triangle area to the rear there. Is there sufficient storage in that one area if the fence were moved to the top of the retaining wall?
You're absolutely right, I didn't catch that when you suggested that, um, so, no, we were the one who wanted to move it to the top of the retaining wall. And that's no storage.
It would help understanding.
I know. So. Um. I know, homeowners in that, I guess we'll have to consider doing an eight-foot fence there for that homeowner. If we can't build a berm up, um, we'd be willing to go to an eight-foot fence. Um, that's the end of my questions. Oh, actually, I apologize, I did have one more comment. Um, on the, the entrance elevation, um, so not the park facing the Route twenty, but the park facing the parking lot, the, the two, stupid and phonetic, but the door swing orientation of the two doors, you might wanna consider flipping both of them, so you can stack your inflow people and checking IDs without you so you can stack your in-flow people and checking IDs without your in-flow and out-flow people being consolidated into one three-by-three rectangle on the sidewalk. So, especially, they should both open into each other rather than away from each other, prevent better flow. It's a very good idea, thanks. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Dane, I just have one question. Um, on the conversation you had about a stop bar, what did you actually mean by, as a stop bar?
A painted line on the ground perpendicular to the path of travel, just like when you have a stop sign in a parking lot.
I get it, okay, great. Okay, uh, do you want us to have a question?
Yes, I do, um, thank you. Um, your design looks wonderful, but welcome to the visit. I, um, I have a couple of questions. One is, you've, you've determined that the ground is fine, and that if there are tanks on the ground, they can be left alone? From the gas station?
There, there are no tanks, they were removed, um, back in two thousand and fifteen, um, when the site was decommissioned. Um, they were the clean of that, it took place then, and there's a bill of, clean bill of health on the property that, um, I can provide to, to Gene. Um, but yeah, no gas station issues up there.
You can probably turn that up a little bit, I don't know.
Okay. You can? What are you talking about on the back of the building? What, I know it's going to be white, but is it going to be, uh, a total, um, privacy fence? What type of fence?
Uh, it's a white vinyl fence, it's within the specification package that we gave to the Design Review Committee. Um, traditional stockade with a top part, but not, doesn't have the individual three-five-to-two fence.
A stockade fence?
It's not a stockade, like, you, you consider, it is a solid white, um, with individual six-inch panels.
Right, okay. Better than the, you know.
Yeah, correct.
Yes. Okay. Um, lamp style, now I know you were saying this was the design review, I was not able to attend that meeting. And so, um, what type of lamp style will you be using? I know it'll be, the lights will be going down, and there'll be LEDs, and are they goose necks? Are they in the, in the pole, in the trial of the lighting unit at the top of the pole?
Yeah, we initially proposed a more contemporary LED style, and Gene had a opinion about, the town has done a whole design project for that part of, uh, storage, and using the goose neck style, so we switched our design to a goose neck style as well. Um, that are mounting on top of, uh, there's, I don't think there's twenty, but maybe, uh, Michael, you were, that's sixteen-foot, uh, black, uh, pole. Yeah, the, the mounting height actually refers to the height of the, the light source itself, and that's twenty feet. So, the, the goose neck might go a little bit higher than that, at the bottom of the lamp, if it's twenty feet. Does that make sense?
And you're talking about the same style lighting on the signage?
Correct.
Yes.
The signage, signage lighting is very similar to what, um, CBS has across the street, again, a goose neck, uh, on a, it's, uh, metal.
Okay. Uh, around the building itself, is there any exterior lighting?
Uh, yes, for security reasons, we have to have lighting around all four sides of the building. Um, so, it's an LED lighting, um, that is only activated in the event that there's an intrusion or during operating hours. Um, and then we also have goose neck lighting over the signs on the, talking about what is, what is, we call the right elevation.
Are you having any lighting on the, um, signage above the doors?
We are, it's, uh, again, a goose neck, which matches the sign, the lighting and the signage at the street.
Okay, good. Um, another couple of questions. The signage for this building, as I see it, wouldn't you want to flip it so that people coming, um, east and west on twenty would be able to read it? Is that looking directly at, yes?
Because the, the street sign at the entrance is a double-sided sign, so it can be viewed for anybody traveling east and left.
Okay. Great. We just a question on that. That's fine, that's good. Um, the other thing is, you showed the side view of the east side of the building. What are the windows going to look like on the west side of it?
The west side facing friendly.
Yes.
Um, so, they are a combination of nine-over-nine double hungs, uh, and then some more contemporary retail, the appropriate color, A-class windows. Uh, they range in size, they are in the architectural plan, um, but those are on the two gable bump outs, that'll be panelized. Yes, thank you.
Um, but I was, that was another question I had, that, that type of window, is there a reason you're not staying with the design of good windows? And you're going to that retail window?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we want to create a, a, a retail look, I mean, this bill needs to have a retail feel to it, not somebody's home. Um, and it's, the, also the cannabis, we're going to be bringing in light revolving ceilings and, um, lighting. Um, our windows can't, by, by the P C C regulations, you can't see through them, but for the other retail user, um, you know, they want light. We need to be able to market this property, so, so it's more disparate, or windows, but we feel it blended in well without, um, keep, while keeping a traditional look, especially the look you from the street. Once you're in the property, um, you know, we want more of a contemporary retail feel to it.
Okay, because when I first looked at it, I see it as unbalanced, in the two entrances? Because you have the entrance and exit into the cannabis area, and the entrance only in the gym area, or retail area.
That, that is the nature of the, of the century and the need for a separate exit, um, we're going to get away.
Yeah, oh, I was just wondering, like, for the design of it, the balance, that's a, just wondering why.
Yeah. Um, okay, so this is already going through design review, right? And you've got a, from the design review?
Yes, it has. And that's why I'm asking the question, I'm just asking to understand. So, the side facing friendly is going to be the retail window, and it won't look like the side facing one thirty-one?
Correct, the side facing one thirty-one is just basically all siding, and that's why we spent so much money on, on design and plans to screen that.
I see windows on that side.
Well, again.
There's a big one. Do you have windows on your side here?
So, front elevation faces Route twenty, and that has windows, all nine-over-nines with bitter applied. Uh, when I think of the side facing one thirty-one, I think of the left elevation or the west elevation, or east elevation.
So do I.
And that's all siding with two doors. Yes, to Russell.
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
That elevation.
Mr. Chair, can I say something? This is Jeff Bridges.
Yeah.
Mike, Stadi, if you want to share your screen again, you can bring up the elevation. Mike, if you want to share your screen again, you can bring up the elevation.
Yeah, you have to share it on your end, and I'll, um, be happy to bring it up.
No, hit your screen, your little button down at the bottom of your screen, it says, there you go. And pick the elevation you want to look at.
Right.
So, this is the elevation you see from Route twenty, um, and there are, it just reads in front of that, so it won't be that far. Um, the elevation, I think, the face one thirty-one, this is eastern property line. And this elevation, if you look at the architectures in your package, you'll see this shows all siding with doors. Um, and those are there for indirect, indirect, and security reasons for the, the century.
Right.
Again, front.
At the left side.
And then the retail side facing friendly is this, this side here.
Right, and you're telling me that they're, they're the flame windows, the retail windows, that the, that the right side of the building is facing friendly, does not repeat what the left side looks like? It's different.
It is very different from the left side, yes.
I don't have a view of that, does anyone have an idea of the other side of the building?
Right, right there?
Uh, the other?
Yeah, the end facing the, uh, mobile home.
Facing friendly. Yes. The gable bend facing east.
That, that's facing friendly, the entrance is facing friendly.
Correct, that faces friendly. We, in your package, you have an elevation for what's called the rear, which is the section facing the manufactured home, so we didn't put that on the side, um, again, that's not a, that's not a view that's seen by anybody.
Right. So, that's, we love this, that's, that's what's facing friendly, the other side is facing Route twenty, in the back is the one with all the trees with just two doors.
Correct.
Wait a minute, let's, say that again, sorry, what did you say? What's facing friendly?
What was, yeah, what Mike was showing us.
The door that's facing is twenty, right?
No, that's, that's, that's facing, uh, friendly.
Correct.
The side to the left here, the side of the sign with the windows, that's facing Route twenty. So, yeah, there, that's.
Oh, okay, I get it, I'm sorry, I wasn't oriented correctly.
Sorry, then, and then the other's the face, the side of the deck only has two doors and all these trees, and the back really is nothing other than facing the back home, so.
Right. Thank you. I guess, uh, yeah, it's, it's, um. In the back, is that the receiving door for the, um, the, where the employee venture? Is that also the receiving door for your product?
Exactly, and that's why I thought, to make it secure. You, you nailed it.
Okay, what color is this, what color is the vinyl and the, uh, rock on the building and the roof, should be?
Um, I don't have all the, I don't have, tip of my tongue, um, they are all in the kitchen.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, the, uh, picture that you just had us, for us all to look at, and it looks, it appears to me that the recent install effort, I'm calling it, and it's the white vinyl and, uh, uh, maybe the, a beige vinyl with the brownstone? Is that accurate? Mm-hmm. Sometimes it looks gray, and I wonder if it's gray or beige.
It's a beige siding, which is about a year, it's a weatherwood architectural shingle, which is a dark brown. And then, stone is called facade by certainty, and we're using Appalachian, Appalachian twilight is the color, a lot of earth tones in it, and some gray.
Thank you. I hear the color is getting on the crosshair. Thank you, I appreciate it. It's a beautiful project. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, is there anything else, all set? And I have no further questions, I think everyone's covered it very well, I, I would like to turn to what others had said about what a great design you have, and a nice job you've done. We'll open this up now for the public, with some public hearing, and, uh, I don't know how many callers we have on, maybe Jeff Bridges, would you let us know, um, if you have any indication of how many people are out there that might like to speak?
I, I think there's one on the phone, Mr. Chairman, is there a speaker on the phone? To the public line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Carl Schmidt, I live at the, uh, Mobile Home Park in the rear of that property. Um, the one thing I wanted to address, if I could, is what you were talking about, the traffic backing up from the lights. Um, I've been here quite a while, and I was here when the gas station was here. And the gas station had two exits, or entrances either way, and, uh, where this has one.
I'm having a.
And it's further away from the lights, um.
You're worried?
The, the gas station had, at, at times, especially during, uh, leaf peepers, leaf, leaf peeper season, uh, they would get a, a lot of traffic. And I have, I've been here, and I've never seen it backed up where I couldn't get out into the traffic. Um, as far as, we, all of us here in the, in this park are in total support of this to go through. Um, it's, it's very, very important to us. Um, they have been the nicest people to work with, and basically, that's all I want to say, is, you know, if, if another buyer bought that property, we could all be out of here, and they have agreed to let us stay, and they have been more than cordial with us. And that's basically all, all I want to say. I sent you a letter, or we all did here, I don't know if you got it in time or not, but, um, I just want to thank you for your, if you can, if you can hear me, I'm having trouble hearing you, but, and that's about all I want to say, thank you.
We can hear you fine, Mr. Schmidt, and we did receive your letter.
Okay, great, and if you have any questions for me?
And, and any other comments from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, is there anybody else on the public telephone line? Good evening, is there anybody else on the public's telephone line? There's no one else on the line, Mr. Chairman, and there's no public comments that have been emailed in this evening.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, Kane, would you like to go over, you are reporting now?
Yes, I would, thank you. So, as Catherine said earlier at the meeting, we've been working with Catherine and her team since last March. They've met with the Land Use Division staff, and we've had multiple meetings, going over the plans, going over the security plan, and then again with the host community meetings. They held a community outreach meeting as required by the Cannabis Control Commission, and there was no opposition at that time. I've provided you with the report last week, where I've gone through all of the criteria of Chapter thirty-one, the Adult Use Marijuana Bylaw, as well as Chapter twenty-four, the Site Plan Review Approval Criteria. After our review with staff and myself, we are recommending approval of this project with the conditions that I've proposed. We do believe it meets all of the requirements. I've provided the board and the applicant with a document that has seventeen proposed conditions of approval. As Mr. Chevlin said, there are some minor details that need to be added to the plans, and they also need Mass D O T approval. We know the Mass D O T approval can take some time, so, as in the past, I would recommend that we condition it with the approval that they receive their Mass D O T approval for any of the signal timing and the construction, the access construction as well. I don't know if, Mr. Chair, if you would like me to read these conditions, or if you're comfortable that everybody's had these to review?
Well, I, I think that, um, if you'd love to review them, that would be fine.
Okay.
For the public.
Sure. So, condition number one, all construction and site improvements shall be in conformance with the plans submitted and approved by the Planning Board, and is modified by these conditions of approval. Where planned notations are requested by these conditions, the applicant shall make those notations and provide a final plan to the Planning Department for review and approval. Number two, all requirements of Mass D O T regarding access construction and signal timing must be complied with and final approval received. The applicant shall provide the Planning Department with a copy of the final approval once received. Three, the erosion control should be added to the legend or as a call-out on the final plan. Four, the existing drainage trench at the drive should be called out as existing to remain on the final plan for clarification of disposition. Five, the curbing and sidewalk on the west side of the building shall be called out as bituminous curbing on the final plan. Number six, detail for the basin shall be added to Sheet Six, Plan Number 19059 on the final plan. Number seven, outlet protection measures shall be shown on Sheets Five and Six, and call outs should be added to the final plan. A sheet adding, number eight, excuse me, a sheet adding the details and specifications for employee parking signs, curb stops, and deliveries shall be added to the final plan as discussed. Number nine, all landscaping is to be installed as shown on the plans submitted. Final landscaping to be shown on the as-built plan to be submitted to the planning department at completion of the project. Number 10, any exterior lighting of or from the buildings shall be subdued, shaded from the view of a butters, and shall not be directed so as to extend above ground level onto the property of a butters or the public right of way. Number 11, all state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and regulations must be adhered to. Number 12, the access to the manufactured home community shall not be blocked at any time during construction or operation of the businesses at this location. Number 13, exterior construction shall only occur during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday. No exterior construction shall occur on Sundays or the following holidays: New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Number 14, the applicant shall notify the planning department 48 hours prior to the start of construction. Fifteen, the site shall be maintained in a neat and orderly condition throughout the construction process. Number 16, operating hours and number of customers per day must comply with the terms of the host community agreement with the town, as may from time to time be amended. Seventeen, an emergency contact phone list with at least two names and numbers on it be supplied to the Sturbridge Police Department and Planning Department to be used by the dispatchers in case of an off-hour emergency prior to the start of the project. The list must be updated whenever necessary for the duration of the project. And that's the end of my proposed conditions.
Great, thank you.
Um, Mr. Page, can I just make a comment? Uh, Jean, just for the record, they have the plans I received yesterday, comments three, or approvals, conditions three, four, six, seven, and eight have been addressed.
Okay.
On the latest plans that I received yesterday.
Three, four, six, seven, and eight.
Based on the comments, three, four, six, seven, and eight, correct.
Thank you.
And then I know some things came up tonight as far as the right turn sign and the median island, I guess that could be through Mass DOT, um, and stop bars, I think that Mr. LaBonte mentioned, uh, no, I just consider.
Okay, so I think that, uh, three, four, six, seven, and eight, you can remove.
Yes.
The others, uh, see, they are only subject to Mass DOT, I don't know if you're going to need to add them in there, I remember the minutes that you agreed to go ahead and request those.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
Want to add those with the conditions, Jean?
I'm sorry, Charlie. Could you repeat?
Yeah, so it, it looks like then we should, um, get rid of, uh, three, four, six, seven, eight.
Yes.
And did you want to put those in on, because they answered with the DEP's approval, not ours.
For the, the stop line and the signage in the median?
The stop line, I guess, is on the property, right, so they could be that, I mean, um, but, but the signs in the median certainly would be up to, uh, Mass DOT to approve. Correct?
Yes, so would you like me to add something about the stop lines? John?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to be around the minus, I think, if you'd like to put it in there, they've agreed to do it.
John Chevlin?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, just for the record, just to have another one there.
Okay, so you're allowed, did you want to put the word in, so we can, uh, adopt the conditions as approved, as part of the approval?
Yeah, I think what's been requested is to have, there is already a stop bar that's been added to the plans at the exit, um, I think it's been brought up by Mr. LaBonte, is you come around the building before you enter into the driveway area to put a stop bar there, right, where the do not enter sign is going to be, so you can't take a western entrance site, so you want the stop bar there to stop cars before they, they make that movement straight into the driveway. Is that correct, Mr. LaBonte?
Yeah, I was afraid of people looking for the quick parking site, accidentally driving the wrong way through the one-way traffic flow around the rear of the building.
John, do you have suggested language for that, so I'm putting it in the right location?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, just, it's just adding a 12-inch stop bar, um, to the, to the right turn movement, adjacent to the front of the building, uh, the right turn movement into the driveway, uh, in the location of the, um, the front of the building, I guess the front of the building, beside the building facing Route 20. Does that make sense?
Can you sign to me, Jean, is that all right?
So I have a 12-inch stop bar shall be added to the plan for the right turn movement on the Route 20 side of the building?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, uh, next, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Charlie, on the, hold on a second.
Yeah.
On the other condition, have a comment?
Sure.
Uh, on number 16, condition number 16, I would like to, and the question is called operating hours and number of customers per day, and ensure, standard patient connections LLC must comply with the terms of the host community agreement. I don't think it's our purview, and 15 years on the board, never taken a vote, now restricted the number of customers of any business in this house, and I don't want to start that now, that's interesting to discuss.
I think, Russell, um, you know, all I'm doing there is adding that they have to comply with the host community agreement as from time to time may be amended. What I don't want to get into is that, because the bylaw says that the special permit granting authority has to, um, set the hours of operation, so I didn't want anything contrary to what the Board of Selectmen had set, number one, and number two, I didn't want them to have to come back and amend their special permit if the Board of Selectmen changed their hours or relaxed the number of appointments.
Is that all right, Russell, again?
My motion, did you hear? I'm sorry, my motion, I'm.
I think, I, I, I know what you're saying about not having ever done this in 15 years on the board, but our bylaw does say that the special permit has to define the hours, and what Jean is saying is, we just want to tie those hours into whatever the Board of Selectmen has agreed to or subsequently changes in the host community agreement. We really don't have many other projects we've ever done with the host community agreement, so that's the difference on this.
Oh, do you want to, I'll, I'll, I'll amend my motion to leave in operating hours, because that's the only concern.
But the number of customers is also what they agreed to in the host community, do you want to take that out?
Yeah, that's my request, I don't, I don't agree with that, I don't.
Jean, is the bylaw saying that we only should be, uh, a game for the hours of operation?
I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback from somebody, not quite sure what you asked me, Charlie, but you could take out the number of...
Oh, no, no.
You could take out the number of appointments, but the number of customers, but you do have to leave the operating hours.
So then, Russell, you'd like to have the operating hours?
So.
Comply with the terms of the host community, if the town has made the signs that have to be amended, all right?
Yes, and we can strike. Oh.
Okay, I have a motion, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing. Any more, any more, take a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Sue.
Do you second it? Do you second it? Dane LaBonte, second.
Dane's second.
Okay, and Jean, do we have a roll call vote now to close the public hearing?
Yes. Charlie Blanchard?
Yeah.
Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sue Waters?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Yes.
Jeff Adams?
Yes.
That's all in favor to close the public hearing.
Okay, great. Next, I'd like to have a motion then to, uh, grant the special permit and site plan review as required, as amended. This is Jeff Adams, I, I, I second Jeff Adams.
Sue Waters. Sue Waters.
Motion by Sue Waters?
Motion, Sue second.
Oh, Jeff made the motion and Sue second?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll call the roll.
Now, so on those, on those conditions, those conditions would, um, strike three, four, six, seven, eight, we'll add that stop bar and modify 16 to get rid of the customers per day.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So now we'll have a roll call on that?
Roll call. Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Yes.
Susan Waters?
Yes.
Dane LaBonte?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Uh, no, and the reason being that Friendly's, which is in 500 feet, is a pre-existing private facility in which children commonly congregate, per Chapter 31, Section B of the zoning bylaw.
Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes six to one.
Very good, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, look forward to work a long time.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have a special permit and site plan review public hearing, Hill Sturbridge Incorporated at 660 Main Street, requesting a special permit and site plan review to co-locate an adult-use marijuana establishment in the premise in which Hill Incorporated operates an off-site medical marijuana dispensary. Uh, Sue, could you, uh, read the, uh, public notice, please?
Sure, and according to the provisions of that chapter 40A, the planning board will have a public notice for those. As the found, South and Better's Mall located at 308 Main Street, on Tuesday, April 14, 2020, at 7:25 p.m., on the application of Hill Sturbridge, Inc., 4 Irving Road, Massachusetts. The applicant requested special permit and site plan approval as required by Chapter 31, 24, and 25, of the Sturbridge zoning bylaws, to relocate an adult-use marijuana establishment in the premise in which Hill, Inc., operates an off-site medical marijuana dispensary, that likely locates at 660 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts. The planning board may elect to sit with Governor Spacers, March 12, 2020. Orders to spend in provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case, details respecting the same will be made public by the planning board in advance of the hearing, and will be posted on the Sturbridge, that event town site, um, virtual meeting. Those who are able to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. A copy of the site plan and application can be issued on the Sturbridge town website at sturbridge.gov, planning board recent filings, arrangements can be made to do the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge planning department at 5008-347-2508, or by email at jaylacy@sturbridge.gov. Any persons listed wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the time and place designated.
Very good, thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to, uh, identify themselves and get designation.
Good evening, um, thank you for the record, my name is Catherine Raffler Adams, I'm an attorney here on behalf of Hill, and I'm wondering if I could share my screen for the PowerPoint?
Catherine, I'm going to make you the presenter.
Right.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen now.
Excellent, yep, I'll go and make it precise.
There you go.
Great, so, um, if everyone can see it, I'm an attorney with a law firm with passenger and book finder with offices in Newton, and I'm here tonight, as I mentioned, on behalf of Hill Sturbridge, Inc., which I'm going to refer to as Hill, Hill during the presentation. Uh, at the outset, I just want to clarify that Hill, Inc. and Hill Sturbridge, Inc. are two related entities held under common ownership. Hill will hold its medical and adult-use licenses and needs two separate entities for accounting and tax purposes. Joining us this evening are the principals of Hill and some members of its development team, Hill's CEO Trish Foss, its CFO James Bonacorsi, and its COO Alex Olshon. All of Hill's founders are longtime residents of Massachusetts and bring a variety of professional backgrounds to the company, including chemistry, IT, business, and financial management. Have lived and own and operate small businesses. The founders of Devastation Subs, developing Hill, a vertically integrated cannabis company for the past five years, and Trish Foss has been working for a time as Hill's CEO for the past several years. In addition to the principals, we've asked the following members of our development team to join us on the call this evening. Randy Hart from DHB, Hill's Traffic Engineer, James Akro, Hill's Civil Engineer from Thompson Liffson, and Joe Combs, Hill's Landscape Architect. There are several components to my presentation this evening. I'm going to provide an overview of Hill and its history with Liffson with the town, I'll then introduce you to the site, and provide an overview of Hill's operations, and then I'll ask Randy to provide us with the results of Hill's traffic study. I'm not going to delve too deep into the technical elements of our site development, since the site has already been constructed, um, and it's not the focus of my presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions, and we do have some additional slides on, if there's any questions come up. So with that, um, by way of orientation, Hill has developed a portion of 660 Main Street as a medical marijuana dispensary. Construction was completed roughly a year ago, the location is shown on slides, which is within the Sturbridge business park as one tends west towards Burnfield on Route 20. The entirely lodge is adjacent to the partial. Hill has a cultivation and processing facility in Warren, and will be conducting retail sales of both medical and adult-use in Sturbridge and Providence. Hill has received provisional approval from the Cannabis Control Commission for medical cultivation and sales, and all of its... for medical cultivation and sales in all of its locations and is in the queue for adult-use licenses in all three of these locations. Uh, as noted by the previous applicant, uh, the TCC application process is lengthy, six to twelve months at a minimum. Hill has filed its TCC application for the Sturbridge facility, um, and visits at the mercy of the, um, the approving process for that. Hill is not yet operational in any of its three locations. Due to unforeseen delays with the cultivation facility in Warren, the hope is to finish that building in later this year and begin dispensing in Sturbridge. Because medical marijuana companies require to both cultivate, process, and sell their own products, the delays in Warren have translated into delays in the opening of Sturbridge. Is my voice clear, or is there any echoes or anything?
We're getting feedback.
It seems to me that we are getting feedback here.
Yeah.
Maybe Jeff can find out if there's a speaker on that's causing the problem.
Someone has a, their speakers too loud, or second...
If everyone's muted.
What? Alright Catherine, try again, please.
I was just saying normally it helps if, if everyone is on mute, that, that seems to help. Oh, interrupt me if it, if it becomes sort of un-audible. I just wanted to spend a few minutes on his background working with the town of Sturbridge for the benefit of those, uh, members of the planning board that were not present, um, during our approvals process in two thousand seventeen. Uh, Hill has been pursuing Sturbridge as a location since two thousand sixteen, when we first began meeting with the previous town administrator, the town planner, and the police chief, and I would also like to acknowledge the assistance of, um, the town planner and the town administrator throughout this process. The location at six sixty Main Street was carefully selected
I'm sorry, can we stop the meeting for a second? Catherine, I'm sorry, we need to stop the meeting for a minute. We're getting a lot of feedback. Sorry, let's just pause.
If someone has their phone and their computer going, please turn one of the other off. Turn your speakers on your phone off, or turn your speakers on your computer off. Alright, is it one, two, three? There's someone out there with some...
Can hear somebody speaking.
Is, there's someone on the phone? Who's got their... Alright, let's try again.
Okay, um, in two thousand sixteen, only a handful of locations were zoned for medical marijuana, and even fewer sites met the Buffalo Park. Once we selected the parcel, we might have too far to decide where, in his opinion, the optimal development location on the parcel would be. Our initial instinct had been to cite the facility up on the hill in a less prominent location. But the chief has stated that his preference was to have the facility be fully visible from Route twenty because it would be immediately apparent to someone driving by, if anyone was on the site after hours. Hill finalized the design of the site and building and received a special permit and site plan approval by unanimous vote of the planning board in two thousand seventeen. The parking needs, um, associated with Hill's eventual expansion into adult-use sales were discussed during the special permit hearings in two thousand seventeen. And in two thousand seventeen, we met with the Conservation Commission and Design Review Commission to review, um, site work, building design, occupancy signage. Following the approval of the project, we engaged in a value engineering exercise and returned to the planning board with a modified building design in the spring of two thousand eighteen for a seventeen-hundred-foot facility. We received a second unanimous vote and concluded construction in two thousand nineteen. Construction, uh, was concluded in accordance with the approved plans, including robust landscaping. Conservation Commission issued an order of compliance, which was reported, um, with this deciding, um, registry of deeds. In the spring of two thousand nineteen, we began speaking with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen about a host community agreement, which we refer to as an H.P.A. for adult-use sales at Hill's approved medical facilities. Hill had made an agreement with the Board of Selectmen in two thousand sixteen to refrain from any adult-use sales at the site for a period of five years. This agreement was in response to the board's concerns about the company's automatic right to add adult-use sales prior to the town acting appropriate zoning for the use. So we thought that we would, we would agree to a generous term of five years to allow the board to, the town to adopt that zoning. Now, the spirit and intent was never to prevent Hill from ever opting to co-locate. And by two thousand nineteen, the zoning was in place and the town was speaking multiple ways about setting adult-use facilities in town. So we requested and received permission to participate in the application process, um, and continued discussions with the board. We executed an H.P.A. in March. That agreement includes, among other operational provisions, aluminum on the company's hours of operations, as well as the adult-use customers that it may see on a daily basis. Uh, the building stands alone and has its own dedicated parking lot, which contains twenty-seven stalls, five more than required by zoning. Division for the building is a barn method in the field. I think we've met that vision with the building. I hope that some of you had, had the opportunity to drive by and, and look at it. I have the proposed hours of operations up on the slide. Those are restricted and the host agreement as well. For an indeterminate initial time period, patrons will make appointments before they visit the facility. Um, Randy Hart, we're going to some detail on the parking, um, for visitors. Patrons will enter the dispensary from the parking lot. Uh, you can see that the entrance desk will be oriented to the left of the building, which is the last bin. Customers will be checking in at the security desk and having their credentials verified. Uh, Hill has contracted with a company called Fullfront to, um, help assist it with staff, staffing, and training. And some of the, um, you know, you have our carpet and your, your shirt.
Okay, I hear Catherine.
Catherine, we lost you.
Dude, I can't hear anything.
Catherine, we lost you.
I'm up there.
Say some, say something again, Catherine.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Great, um, we've got six point-of-sale stations within the dispensary, natural lighting, thanks to acupulopin in the roof, and additional references to the exterior concept of a barn, such as the door. The building was designed to be as energy efficient as possible, and we have provided restrooms for both patrons and staff. Uh, in terms of flow, once patrons enter, they'll meet with customer care specialists who will provide the level of care and consultation that's appropriate to the transaction, whether medical or adult-use. A private consultation space will be designated for the medical patients. Uh, if a repeat customer desires to place an order in advance and have it ready and waiting for them for pickup, we will have the dedicated express, um, cashier for that. Uh, behind the sales counter, you can see a secure stockroom. Products will be delivered to the premises in sealed containers into a receiving room at the rear of the building, where it will be checked in using Hill's seat-to-sale system before it is transferred into the stockroom. All products released to the facility in a sealed bag, which is child-resistant and odor-free. No noise or odor will emanate outside the building. We've installed VOC carbon removal filter housing canons on the discharge side of the three exhaust fans to ensure that no odor will be detectable from the outside. Security cameras will monitor the full perimeter of the site to ensure that no loitering occurs. Hill has engaged Netwatch USA, one of the leading providers of security in the cannabis space, to monitor all of its facilities. Prior to the construction of the dispensary, we had several meetings with chief board to discuss camera placement and security protocols. In addition to the cameras, there are a number of other security elements, which include glass break monitors on the windows and access control, um, pads on the back of the house door. Customers will be prohibited from consuming the product on-site, not in the building, not in the parking lot, and will monitor the parking lot to ensure compliance with this regulation. With that, I'd like to turn to VHB. Um, Randy Hart is gonna summarize his traffic study for us.
Good evening, I'm glad you have everybody's law. Um, I'm glad you signed the facility with the use and the testing.
Mr. Hart, you have to speak into your phone.
It's good, I don't know. I'm trying to dial anywhere, and it's just, it's really clear. I can't find my phone. I'm trying to get it, it's stuck there. Sorry about that.
Goodbye, town, bye-bye.
Can you hear me now?
You have to speak up a little bit, please.
So, how do you, Randy? Okay, so, very sorry about that. Got a echo going, yeah, hang on. Okay, I apologize, um. So we prepared the traffic, Hill Traffic Analysis Study in support of the application. Uh, our study's been reviewed by the town-appointed peer consultant, Par Corporation, and, uh, as outlined in their letter of appeal night, Par is satisfied with our responses to the initial comments and questions that were raised on the document. And so with that in mind, I, I'm just gonna keep my remarks very short here tonight, given that the process is complete. Um, the site will be accessed, as shown on the plan, via Galileo Drive, um, from Main Street, Route twenty. The site driveway departs Galileo Drive halfway up, um, the hill, and, uh, includes, uh, access to twenty-seven parking spaces, as Catherine has mentioned, two of which are handicap spaces and one that is designated as delivery-only. Uh, the delivery door is on the right side of the, uh, building, as shown on the graphic. Um, the, uh, entrance to the facility on the left, and there's an area at the end of the driveway where, if it's ever needed, an attendant would be placed. And that idea of the attendant at the parking lot does fill up. We don't anticipate it will, but if it did on a certain day, it would be monitored and that the attendant that basically goes out to the driveway and directs people up to a higher, uh, level parking lot, which is, uh, overflow and for employees. Um, next slide, Catherine? So, the site, as, uh, I think you're aware, will be managed through an appointment-only system so the traffic to and from the site will be controlled. Uh, based on the planned operations, the site will generate approximately three hundred and forty customer, uh, per day Monday through Thursday, and about four hundred and twelve customers per day Friday and Saturday. Um, the twenty-seven parking spaces itself, um, there is, as I said, overflow up at the top of the hill. You can see the big parking area at the, um, Echo Training Center. Uh, employees would be directed up there on a regular basis. Um, and there's a cap, as I said, on the number of customers that would be allowed based on your zoning, six hundred or more. However, based on the hours of operation and the current planned appointment schedule, the site will see significantly less than that. Um, other than that, the, the traffic study really demonstrated a number of things. The site driveway will work at a good operation during the critical peak hours. We've confirmed, what we confirmed the first time we did the, um, bids for, um, the, uh, medical marijuana, that the sight lines for access at Route twenty are, uh, more than adequate to meet the requirements. And the accident history at the site driveway at Route twenty was very low. I think there was only two accidents in this five-year period of most recent data that was available. So we don't see any, any real issues relative to access, circulation, or parking with the proposed plan the way it's, uh, the way it's been, uh, introduced. So with that, I'm gonna turn this back to Catherine and certainly if there are questions this evening, I'd be happy to try to respond to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, we've reviewed the reports that, uh, Ms. Wong provided from the various department heads. No concerns were raised. Pairs were several clarifications, which we, it's provided. Um, as a practical matter, concerns relative to the development of the site and the appropriateness of the facility, um, were addressed in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen by March. Once the building was completed last spring, we hosted multiple tours of this facility for members of the fire department, and we'll continue to engage with local first responders to ensure that they are familiar with the layout of the building prior to the opening date of the facility. Hill's proposal meets all of Chapter thirty-one's requirements, and we've presented information this evening sufficient to enable the planning board to make the findings required. Um, by thirty-one point oh six, specifically, if the establishment does not derogate from the purposes and intent of this section in the zoning bylaws, we have submitted all of the required application components and received positive recommendations from all of the department heads who have provided comments to the town planner. This information is sufficient for the board to consider approving the special permit request. The proposed establishment is designed to minimize adverse impact on abutting properties. As Randy noted, the impact on traffic will be minimal, and we've designed operational protocols to further reduce the potential impact on the neighborhood. The police chief has advised that the security plan provides sufficient assurance that adequate security controls will be implemented to ensure the protection of the public health and safety during hours of operation, and that all marijuana products will be adequately secured on-site or via delivery. Hill's odor control plan provides for the ongoing safe operation of the establishment and minimizes adverse impact on abutting property. Specifically, as noted, all products will be delivered to the facility and sold to patrons in sealed packages. As Ms. Wong's traffic report note, uh, her, um, report to the board noted, with the exception of the traffic report, which has been revised, the applicant met all of the criteria for site plan approval in two thousand seventeen. Therefore, we would ask that the board find the proposed design and operation of the marijuana establishment will meet the requirements of Chapter thirty-one. Uh, I wanna thank the board, um, for hearing our application tonight, and that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good, Catherine. Thank you very much. Uh, John Sheppard, the other thing you wanna add? I know it's got a pretty complete report, but do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
No, as, as Mr. Hart stated, you know, our, our thought was that the, the study was done in compliance with what MASTU requires for a traffic study. Um, I think their, what they did as far as traffic counts, they had some old counts, but they have put a very conservative, uh, factor on there for future growth. So I think the report overall, as far as analysis, is, is conservative. And I just had a couple comments that need to be addressed. You know, when I was talking in Brentfield, I, you know, didn't think they would get, come back and have any development that would impact the traffic here, but just for safety measures, they did check, and there really wasn't anything except for, I believe, a similar type of facility about two miles away. Uh, and the other, all the kind, only other comment I had was just, uh, reminding you to read the plans better. I, I was looking, I thought the entrance was in the back of the, back of the building, but after, uh, Mr. Hart brought to my attention, I, I missed the door on the side, so I just wondered how the whole operation's gonna work, but, uh, that is clarified. So I think everything's been addressed on my end, and, you know, I'll see how you should get to traffic.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay, uh, I'll pick questions out from the planning board. Jeff Adams, do you have any questions? Yeah, I did, um. So, just so I understand this correctly, so, so both the recreational facility and the medical facility will be operating the same building, correct? Not just the same campus, it's the same building?
Same building, same room, actually, yep.
Okay. Um, hey Gene, so, so, uh, so there was... There's a special permit that is approved by the planning board in two thousand seventeen for the medical facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
Gene?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, if, um... Do we have a copy of that? May I, I'm, did you send that out?
Can I send that out? Of course.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just like to see it. Um, I don't think your name's Catherine, it's just me either way, but, um...
I don't know if you can unpack on this issue either way, but, um, do you recall how that, how that, it was obviously granted, but what was the vote, Amanda?
The vote was unanimous to grant.
Okay. And were there any conditions associated with that?
The conditions of that approval mainly related to the development of the site, because it was, there was no building there at the time. So, the conditions were related to the construction of the building, construction of the parking lot, stormwater management. There was a provision that Heal Incorporated could not convert into a medical, excuse me, an adult-use retail facility for a period of five years. However, it should be noted that this is, we are granting, or the board will be granting a special permit to Heal Sturbridge, Inc., which is a different entity than Heal, Inc.
Okay. So, in your opinion, are all the conditions satisfied except for that last one?
Yes, all the conditions are satisfied. I signed off on the final inspection. We've received the ASBILs, Building Department, Fire Department, Planning Department, all made all of our inspections and signed off on that project.
Okay. And it is, the adult use sale, the restriction to sell recreationally in July of 2021, does that apply to HSI as well?
Does that apply to, I'm sorry?
Does that apply to HSI as well as Heal?
No, just Heal. And actually, AS-
HSI could start-
I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say, so HSI could potentially start, could start selling recreationally before July of 2021, correct?
That's correct. And actually, what we expect to happen is, if this permit is granted this evening, we expect that the Board of Selectmen will renegotiate the host community agreement for Heal Incorporated and take away any rights of Heal Incorporated to convert to an adult use at any time. Oh, it's already, I'm sorry, Jeff just corrected me. That language is already in the medical.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to reserve, I'm going to reserve any further questions for after, at the end, but I have no further questions right now. Okay, great. Chris Bouchard, you have any question?
My only question was in regards to the traffic study. And I realize it's a non-for question, but was the Brimfield Fair, the increased congestion for the two or so weeks, was that taken into account in the running? Additional considerations given for the flow during those times? And then, I'm just curious, with the addition of the recreational side of it, how did that change the flow of the, or what was the changes in the flow for the facility itself?
So, to answer the first question, the model typical condition, not a peak that you would see when there's a fair or a special event going on, you know, if there was a need to do that, you would, but typically for DOP, you know, DOP traffic impact and access requirements require, you know, typical conditions, and that's what we modeled here. And then, so the differential between the former approved project and the proposed, I think he's outlining this study, and just trying to look it up to see what the differential was. I may have to go back and compare the-
Can I just, while I give Randy a minute to look for that, I wanted to address Mr. Bouchard's question. With my memory from the 2017 special permit hearing, I think a question about the Brimfield Fair was raised, and I believe the police chief was there, and we sort of took a moment and said, well, if we need to look at a police detail for those three weeks, we'll do that if it's, you know, if it's warranted and there's increase in congestion. So, that offered stills him.
So, just as an example, when we did peak hour, evening peak hour for just the medical was around 50 trips total, the Saturday midday was about 52, and then if you look at what the current proposal is, we're at 84 on an evening and 84 on a Saturday. So, you know, it's adding about 30 trips to a peak hour, one every two minutes. Thank you. You're welcome. Chris, anything else? What's going to do for my? Okay, great. Russell Chamberlain?
Well, I'm all set, Charlie, except for the second order conditions, like I said, and the previous-
Those are all in the past, right, okay. Michael, Susan?
Yeah, this is just a curiosity for me. So, there's one door to enter and exit the building, but a previous applicant, they had mentioned that they think they needed a separate exit to satisfy the candidate's control requirements. Is that not pertaining to this, Catherine, in your opinion, or?
We have not gotten that feedback from the planning board's control commission.
Okay, all right. That was the only question I had.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Jane Labonte? I don't have any questions, no.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sue Waters?
No question.
Okay, great. Okay, now we'll open up the, I don't have any questions. We'll open it up to the public. Do we have any public online, do you know, Jeff Bridges?
Is, good evening, anybody on the public line this evening with a comment for this public hearing? Is there anybody on the public phone line for this public hearing?
There's no one on the line, Mr. Chair, there's no comments on the email.
Great, very good, thank you. Jean, do you want to go over your report, please, and recommendations?
Yes. So, as Catherine mentioned, we've been working with this particular applicant since 2017, when we reviewed the medical marijuana facility. So, when she, when they applied for their adult-use recreational permit, the application and supporting materials was sent out to all departments for review and comment, and of course, Par Corporation was contracted with to conduct a peer review on the traffic. There were no concerns noted from any staff, or Par for that matter, and we would recommend approval of this permit with conditions. And there are only two conditions, since all of the other conditions, as I stated earlier, were within the medical marijuana facility for the construction. So, the only two conditions that I would recommend are, number one, all proposed operations shall be in conformance with the application and supporting documentation provided. Number two, I would propose we modify this to be consistent with CPC condition that we just did, and change that to operating hours must comply with the terms of the host community agreement with the town, as may, from time to time, be amended. I would recommend that we strike in number of customers per day for consistency. And I would recommend you approve-
Very good.
-the special permit and site plan.
Very good, thank you very much, Jean. Okay, so I'd like a motion now to close the public hearing, please. Fomo Russell.
Okay. Sue Waters.
Yes, and Sue Second. Great, very good. And now I'll take a motion to approve the special permit and site plan as submitted, with the two conditions and three to two words I gave. Fomo, Fomo. Just, Fomo, okay.
Okay.
Russell Second, okay, do you want to call the roll?
I'm sorry, whose motion was that? Jeff was?
Chris, I think, Chris Bouchard and Russell was Second.
Okay, thank you. So, now I'll call the roll. Sue Waters?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Yes.
Dane Labonte?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Yes.
Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yes.
The vote passes seven to zero.
Very good, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, on behalf of Heal.
Thank you. All the time.
Good luck, everybody. Good luck. Very good. Good night, everybody.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing to consider the proposal to amend zoning bylaws on the public. Permitted uses of the president's mansion, and Sue, could you read the public comment, please?
Sure. In accordance with provisions, Massachusetts, general law chapter 40A, section 5, the service planning board will hold a public hearing in Veterans Memorial Hall at the Town Hall located at 308 Main Street, Derby, at 8:15 PM, on Tuesday, April 4th, 2020, to consider amendments to the town zoning bylaw as petitioned by the planning board. The proposal to amend the zoning bylaw by updating permitted uses and special exception uses, including adding language that would allow a special permit for building heights over 35 feet, in chapter 7, the commercial district. Also proposed is an amendment to chapter 8, commercial tourist district, which would insert craft beverage business with tasting room. Chapter 9, general industrial district, is supposed to be amended by adding language that would allow a special permit for building heights over 35 feet. The permitted uses in chapter 10, adding language that would allow a special permit for buildings over 35 feet. Chapter 11, commercial 2 district, would be amended by updating permitted uses and special exception uses, including adding language that would allow a special permit for building heights over 35 feet. A new definition for personal service establishment is proposed to be added to chapter 2 definitions. Building height changes to chapter 19, capable dimensional requirements are proposed to update quit notes to indicate a special permit may be granted to certain districts for building heights over 35 feet. The planning board may elect, consistent with Governor Baker's May 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A, to hold a public hearing virtually, in which case details, especially the same, will be made public by the planning board in advance to hearing, and will be posted on the sturbridge.gov website, virtual meeting. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The full text of the proposed zoning additions may be reviewed on the Sturbridge Town website at sturbridge.gov slash planning board.
Thank you very much. Do you want to go over this, or how do you want to?
Yes, I can. So, we'll take these one by one, and I've provided you all with the proposed amendments and with the appropriate motions for each as well. And I'll go over these now, and you could actually take one vote on everything, or we could vote individually.
Well, if one vote on everything works, I think that might be the best.
Okay, sure, we can do that.
Okay.
So, I'll go through the proposed amendments. So, the first proposed amendment would be to amend chapter 2 of the zoning bylaw, and this is our chapter on definitions. And you'll recall, this proposal was to add a definition for personal service establishment. This is something that wasn't previously defined in the bylaw. And so, we propose to define that as personal service establishments are those which administer personal services, including nail salons, tanning salons, day spas, tattoo shops, piercing, aromatherapy, skin clinics, medical spas, pet grooming, tailoring, shoe repair, and other similar uses. So, that was the last language that the board had supported. Are there any questions on that, or should I keep moving? All right. All right. So, the next chapter that we're proposing to amend is chapter 7, and that's the commercial district. So, the proposed amendments for this chapter are in C, personal service establishments would be listed as a permitted use. We'd also propose to add craft beverage business with tasting room, to be consistent with the definitions that were approved at the January special town meeting, and urgent care facility. Uses by special permit that are proposed to be added are, number one, we would propose to delete place of commercial amusement or recreation, such as bowling alley, theater, motion picture, dramatic or musical, museum or golf driving range, and insert indoor recreation facilities, outdoor recreation facilities, and indoor family amusement centers, again, consistent with the new definitions adopted in January. Excuse me. Finally, in chapter 7, we're proposing to add the language on the planning board having the ability to grant special permits for building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories pursuant to a determination of the special permit granting authority that the design, sighting, and scale of the proposed building is consistent with the location, scale, and characteristics of the uses of the site, and is in harmony with the surrounding properties and land uses. And again, that's consistent with language that we've put in other chapters. So, that's the remainder of chapter 7. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll move on to chapter 8. So, chapter 8, the only change proposed is to add, as a permitted use, craft beverage business with tasting room, again, for consistency. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll move on to chapter 9. So, the proposed change in chapter 9, which is the industrial district, is to add the language, again, about building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories pursuant to a determination of the special permit granting authority that the design, sighting, and scale of the proposed building is consistent with the location, scale, and characteristics of the uses of the site, and is in harmony with the surrounding properties and land uses. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to chapter 10. So, chapter 10 is really a redo of the permitted uses. So, permitted, this is the industrial park district, and the permitted uses proposed to be added are, excuse me, A, animal clinic or hospital, including animal rescue, B, business support services, an establishment within a building that is oriented toward providing services to other businesses, although it may also serve the general public. Examples of these services include, but may not be limited to, blueprinting, copying, printing services, mailing, mailbox services, security system services, soils and material testing laboratories, and other similar services. Child daycare center. And that's defined as a commercial or nonprofit child daycare facility designed and approved to accommodate 15 or more children. This may include infant centers, preschools, and school-age child daycare facilities. D, equipment sales and rental, retail and service establishments which may offer a wide variety of materials and equipment for sale or rental. E, handcraft industries, including retail sales of the products produced on the premises. F, health and fitness facilities. G, information processing facilities, office-type facilities characterized by high employee densities and occupied by businesses engaged in information processing and other- densities and occupied by businesses engaged in information processing and other computer-dependent and/or telecommunications-based activities. Examples include computer software and hardware design and development, consumer credit reporting, data processing services, health management organization offices where no medical services are provided, insurance claim processing, mail order and electronic commerce transaction processing, telemarketing, plumbing, heating, and electrical wareha-, oh, excuse me, H, plumbing, heating, and electrical warehouses, showrooms, and manufacturers. I, laboratories for research and development. And I'm just realizing now, my apologies, the definitions for business support services, child daycare, and equipment sales and rental, and information processing facilities should all be included in Chapter 2. So, at the end, I would ask the board to vote that amendment, and since it is your proposed changes, you can do that without it being out of the scope. On the next page, L, we propose to add packaging to the manufacturing uses. Then we're proposing to add M, which is food and beverage products manufacturing, including distilleries, breweries, and co-packing and commercial kitchen space. N, under wholesale and warehouse storage facilities, we added the language, including self-storage facilities. Under professional offices, we're proposing to delete the minimum floor area of 30,000 square foot per building and add call centers. And then add a new R, professional scientific and technical services. Under the special permit exceptions, again, we're proposing to add the building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories pursuant to a determination of the Special Permit Granting Authority that the design, sighting, and scale of the proposed building is consistent with the location, scale, and characteristics of the uses of the site, and is in harmony with the surrounding properties and land uses. That is the end of the changes for Chapter 10. Could we maybe just vote to modify this one, to split the definitions out and insert them in Chapter 2? Whose motion was that?
Second.
I see.
I'm sorry, who?
Yes, two.
And who?
He seconded the motion, Charlie.
Charlie made the motion, okay. And a roll call vote, please. Dane, Dane Labonte?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Yes.
Sue Waters?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Yes.
Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion to amend Chapter 10 to break out the definitions and put them in the article with the changes to Chapter 2, pass seven to zero. We'll vote on the entire change all at once, though, at the end. Moving on to Chapter 11, under the permitted uses, we're proposing to add personal service establishments. On the next page, we're proposing to add craft beverage business with tasting room and urgent care facility. Exceptions by special permit, we're proposing to delete place of commercial amusement or recreation, such as bowling alley, theater, motion picture, dramatic or musical, museum or golf driving range, and inserting indoor recreational facilities, outdoor recreation facilities, and indoor family amusement centers. Under the exceptions, we're proposing to add building heights greater than 35 feet or three stories pursuant to a determination of the Special Permit Granting Authority that the design, sighting, and scale of the proposed building is consistent with the location, scale, and characteristics of the uses of the site, and is in harmony with the surrounding properties and land uses. Any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, moving on to our final chapter, Chapter 19. So, the changes in Chapter 19, which is the Table of Dimensional Requirements, are all related to footnotes. So, the proposal is to add footnote 3 to the table on the maximum height for commercial district that states may be varied by special permit by the planning board. Add a footnote 5 to the table on the maximum height for Commercial 2 District that states may be varied by special permit by the planning board. Add a footnote 6 to the table on the maximum height for the General Industrial District that states may be varied by special permit from the planning board. Renumber existing footnote 7 to footnote 8. Add a new footnote 7 to the table on maximum height for the industrial park district that states may be varied by special permit from the planning board. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, the appropriate motion would be move to support the amendments to the zoning bylaws as reviewed this evening with the amendments to Chapter 10, and to forward those recommendations to the town administrator for inclusion on the annual town meeting warrant.
Hold on, Russell, can you?
Russell?
Seconded Jeff Adams.
Okay. And a roll call vote, Dane Labonte?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Yes.
Sue Waters?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm?
Yes.
Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Jeff Adams?
Yes, yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yeah.
The vote passes seven to zero.
Okay. And Jane, I'd like to thank you very much for all of what you did on that. It really made it easy to go through the minutes.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, the chancellor, is that, please?
So, I really don't have too much of anything. I can just let you know that Pilot Travel came in this week and filed their applications for their proposed project. However, I'll be taking that with me this evening to review. I think that they'll need, they'll probably need to do a little more work on their submittals, so I'm thinking the public hearing will probably be the end of May or the beginning of June. So, right now, our next meeting dates are April 28th, May 12th, and May 26th, and I'll keep you aware as to what comes in, if anything, and if we need to have a meeting on those dates, or if it can wait until the next meeting. And that's all I really have for right now.
Very good. Okay, does anyone have a go, please? No? Anyone have any news? Okay, great.
I'll make motion.
I knew it, Karen. Can I, can I, can I tell you, just one second before we adjourn, I just wanted to take a second to put on the record and just to thank Jeff, Jane, and Janaye for making this happen, just remotely. I just, I just, it's just such a disaster, probably, knowing what we did with it, and it just went swimmingly, I thought, and we got a lot done tonight, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Well done.
And thank you all for cooperating, and, you know, it takes a little tweaking, but you guys did a great job, you all did a great job, so thank you.
Yeah. Agreed.
Okay, Sue, go for it.
Make motion. Uh, to adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote. I was just gonna shut you off, no. Okay, roll call vote, Dane Labonte?
Yes.
Charlie Blanchard?
Yes.
Sue Waters?
Yes.
Michael Chisholm? Chris Bouchard?
Yes.
Jeff Adams? Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Russell Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay, vote passes seven to oh. Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you all, take care.